Right now, there's so much that's going on, it's just trying to stay a bit longer. But it's just that having to process and digest.
It's a lot to take in. Especially right at this time of all the transition.
Good evening, call order Monday, May 1st, 2023. Can we have a whole meeting? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Mayor Nelson?
Here.
Alderman Hopefer?
Here.
Alderwoman Eichmann?
Present.
Alderman Hassan?
Here.
Alderwoman Day?
Here.
Alderman Barber?
Here.
Alderman Craig?
Present.
Excellent. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item B, overview and presentation by the Department of City Development staff of the United Development Ordinance Noise Regulations. Mr. Martinez?
Good evening, Committee of the Hall. This is an informative presentation to address the the meeting of the Common Council on February 20th that recommended to hold a discussion on the March Committee of the Hall, but it was rescheduled and now we're presenting this in the Committee of the Hall meeting. So, the first item I would like to present is just an overview of the regulations regarding noise. So, the Unified Development Ordinance has this section about noise that has a table that established the maximum permitted noise levels per zoning district. These should be measured according to the ordinance at the boundary of a zoning district or the boundary line of any site. But the PDDs are not listed in this table. So the question is, what is the maximum noise level permitted in PDDs? Specifically, the PDD number 37, the Rock Sport Complex, Ballpark Commons.
Could you, Mr. Martinez?
Yes.
If you could, if we adjust that mic so it's closer.
No.
It'll be a little loud. Thank you.
How about now? Okay.
No, it's fine. Just need some more volume.
So, the planable district for the Rock has an ordinance that was adopted in 2018 that, in the conditions of approval, you can see, condition of approval number two, says that the applicant has also agreed to comply with the City of Franklin noise ordinances as they relate to the standards of 79 decibels of DVA at the property boundary. So, that established the maximum noise level in the condition of approval for these PDD. And according to the condition of approval, that should be measured at the property boundaries. So, during the approval process, the operator installed three sound meters. So, the west is located here, west of the parking lot between the residential neighborhood and the PDD. The north meter located here, close to the city limits. And the east meter close to 76th Street. So, that's the meters and the data staff use for the enforcement of the noise levels. So this is item C. Do you want me to stop here or continue?
Please continue.
Okay. So, this is just the steps that staff normally follow to enforce the noise section of the UDO. So, all the noise complaints that go through the website, go to City Development Department staff. That's basically myself that I do the enforcement. Then I review the noise complaints based on the sound monitoring data from the three meters in my computer. I have access to the data from the three meters. Then I look for the violations. So what is a violation? So any event that exceeds the 79 decibels between 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And after that time, after 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM, it'd be 74 decibels. Why the difference? If we go to the table, so for all districts, there is a 5 decibels difference based on the period of time of the day from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. So for the evening, there is a stricter requirement. The ordinance only lists the 79 decibels where staff to be consistent with this table, to be more, to have a more strict requirement during the evening than the night, then we use the 5 decibels difference. Then if there is a violation, then we send a notice of violation to the business, to the operator of the Rock. At this point, staff haven't issued any notice of violation using this procedure to the operator. But I would like to acknowledge that of these three meters, most of the time, the only meter that is running and saving data is the north meter, one located right here. This meter, the west meter, that is so important because it's between the residential neighborhood here and the development, has difficulties in the last year, this year. So...
Mr. Martinez, when did you last check to see if those meters were operational?
I did a check today.
This morning?
Yes. Today, all the three monitors are running and saving that data.
Okay.
That was today. They start or they resume working since April 27th, so last week. But when I was writing this memo to be presented to the Committee of the Hall, at that time, they weren't up to work, only the north meter was working and saving data.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay.
Ms. Day?
Regula, when... Am I correct in the assumption that you and your department are only looking at the sound monitors on a complaint basis?
Correct.
So it would be fair to say that you might not know that they're not monitoring unless you're getting a complaint? That it's, might be violating the sound level?
I mean, every time we receive a complaint, I review the sound data.
Right. But I'm saying if we're not getting complaints, it could be offline and we wouldn't know it because you're not regularly, you know, it's not part of your day-to-day to go in and look at the sound.
Right. But since, for example, the west and the east monitors have difficulties, technical difficulties, last year, occasionally, I reviewed the data to see if the monitors were working. And then I notify the operator by an email saying, okay, this monitor is still not working. Please address or provide a solution.
You notice that they're not working, you notify the operator to rectify the situation?
Correct. Correct. Okay.
Alderman Hopefer?
But we didn't notice they were working for approximately a year?
I will say that last year, most of the time, only the north monitor was working, running and saving data.
Will you get the data from all three separate?
I have access.
How do you access the data?
Through my computer. I have software provided by the operator. And I can see the three monitors, I can see the status of each monitor. Most of the time, say, the north meter and the east meter were either not running or running but not saving data.
So then, I mean, again, that's the problem. If we don't have the data, I mean, that's potentially correct that things occurred that we don't know about because there was no data recorded and no report recorded.
Correct. Yeah, that's correct. So, as soon as I noticed that one of the monitors was not working, then I notified the operator, but it took long to get the repairs.
How were the monitor sites identified? Who picked them out and placed them in what direction?
Sorry.
Who designated where the monitors were placed and what directions they were facing?
Oh, that was established in this document. This is part of the Noise and Light Addendum. That is a document that has the standard for the location of the meters. That was the time when was decided the location of these meters.
I understand it's in a document, but who determined it? Was it a sound professional that did it? Was it the developer? Was it somebody from... Who said, "This is where they should be and this is how they should be facing"? Do you know that?
Yeah, that I don't know. That I don't know. Yeah, that I don't know.
And one last thing. Am I correct that I seem to have read somewhere in some minutes or transcripts, the sound that we're talking about only applies to the stadium district? Is that correct?
Well, that's why it's here, a condition of approval of the district, where it specifically lists a noise level of 79 decibels.
Okay, so if it's the district, is the umbrella bar, for example, or the drive-in, or any of those things included in the district?
Right. Correct.
Okay, so all of those need to come under that?
Correct. Correct.
Sign 79 decibels?
Correct. However, I'd like to note here that here in the conditions says all events utilizing speakers. For example, fireworks are always over that this limit, but they are exempted under a separate UDO section. So that's the exception, the fireworks.
And then, a lot of references have been made to a county program that identified 79 decibels. I've never seen that document. Does the city have a copy of that document, do you know?
The sound study, the comprehensive sound study at a meeting, the county's wrapping up with a consultant on the sound study. But I haven't seen a draft.
Yeah, where they designate 79. I'd like to see that if possible. That's all.
Mr. City Attorney?
No, sorry.
The Alderman was asking about the prior study. There were studies done and that's how they were located and those should all be in the file. City worked with the county with regard to the development of this district.
Well, that's why when the Noise and Light Addendum was prepared...
Alderman Barber?
You're talking about the new one that's ongoing. There is a sound study in progress.
In progress. In progress.
But Alderman Hopefer, just for the record, you're referring to the original document?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Barber?
I'm concerned about the lack of data. The Corry Monitoring Committee, as you know, has got monitors. And we know when they're not working, basically, by the readings. Why wouldn't the operator of these machines be more proactive in making sure they're working and the data that we're getting is valid? And we're able to judge their performance based upon good data. So I guess, if it's up to us to tell an operator it's not working, I think there's a disconnect. So my thought is, the operator should be telling us which ones aren't working and correct them.
Well, yeah, as I mentioned before, I mean, every time that I notice that they're not working, let them know. Yeah. So, for example, when I noticed that the two monitors, the east and north, were running but not saving data, that was like two weeks ago, and notified them. And they resolved this last week.
Do we pay for this data?
Do, sorry, do we pay for that?
You said the operator is notified. Is that a contract with an operator or are we paying for their monitoring it?
No. I mean, I notified the operator, Rock, for a venture and they have a consultant to do the repairs of the monitors.
Is there any way that we can get that changed to where the operator lets us know when they're not working? And gives us, make sure that the data that we're getting is sufficient to handle any kind of complaints?
Well, I'll chime in for a second here. So one of the things that I believe has been addressed as this moves along is there is a new point of contact there for noise issues and noise monitoring. And that's kind of why I put that out there and see if it was all operational as of today. And next thing is also the calibration of these sound monitors. And to your point about data, I agree with the data. It is probably in our best interest that we have the first line to observe this and to monitor it in real time, opposed to putting the onus on someone else. So I agree that as long as we have the ability to maintain control of the real-time data, I think that puts the city in an advantage.
It just seems like there's big gaps where we don't know that, though. That's my concern.
But now that they're up and running, I think that one of the things that we need to work on as a city is making sure, you know, daily, that's simply a quick check. Quick check does...
Whatever. Whatever makes sense.
Well, that's the only, that's the only way we're going to be able to do that, in my opinion, in real time.
One other, one follow-up?
Yes.
On the decibel sheets and the ratings that are on the chart, has that ever been cross-checked against some of the other communities around us to see how this is comparable to what others might be setting up in their system? Has there been a comp study done that would indicate where we are in relation to surrounding communities?
Well, I haven't done that comparison.
I'd like to see what other communities have as their benchmarks, just to see if they're in line or not. So somehow, I don't know how we can ask for that data or that we can send back to the community development to ask if they could get that or look at that.
That may be a document that was done when this was originally drafted. So maybe that's where that would be found?
I don't know what, I mean, I don't know if it was ever done as a comp study.
That I don't know.
Okay. Alderwoman Day?
So my question goes back a few years. So, I might need a little bit of help from Mayor Nelson and Alderman Barber. I vaguely remember back in 2019, when a lot of this was occurring, that the city was getting sort of real-time alerts when we would go over the 79 decibels. I believe the mayor or somebody was getting an alert when that would happen. Do we know if that still is happening? Or if we could put that back in some way so that we are alerted when that occurs? Or someone is alerted when that occurs? Because it might not always be caught by somebody, you know, in the neighborhood. But I, and I said, this is, you know, three years ago now and the number of us that were here during that discussion is less. But I seem to remember that was something that we either were doing or something that we could do. Because I remember that a few times it would go off, but it was, you know, like an airplane flying over or something. And then we knew that right away, that that's what the sound was.
Currently, I don't receive any alerts.
Okay.
Alderman Craig?
The software that you use to monitor the sound levels, is that a proprietary software? Or is that something web-based that anyone can access and at the very minimum have a view of? Or is that something that is kept proprietary and is not available for consumption?
Correct. It's available for city development staff. And it's also, I believe, it's also available to police department staff. But it's not accessible to the public.
For public consumption. Okay. And what, and I see like, and once again, much to Alderwoman Day's kind of just wanting to have a little bit more of that background sort of thing. At what point was the 79... Because I'm looking at the table and the table says for for an airport overlay district, your maximum sound level is 65. But for this, it's markedly higher? Is there, like, is there anything that kind of justified that sort of carve-out?
Um, yeah. So this ordinance was adopted before my time here with the city.
Okay.
So, I think it's in the memo that there is a section of the UDO that has like 15 decibels increase to the noise level. So I'm not sure if that is the reason for the 79 decibels. But I believe that it could be the 65 decibels for the business districts plus the 15 increase that is in the UDO that resulted in the 79 decibels.
Okay.
I believe, but I'm not 100% sure.
And then, lastly, at least for right now, what you're able to monitor and watch, is there... And especially since the police department's also able to access this, is it when the noise crosses that 79 decibel that that's where things kind of become more of alert? Or is it as you approach that, where you get to 60, 65, where you go from like a green status to yellow and then eventually red? Or is it just either everything's awesome or everything's really, really bad? Like, is it a sliding scale or is it just a pass/fail sort of situation?
When we receive a violation, I look for events that exceed the 79 decibels level to, in order to look for a violation. However, I listen to other events that are less than the 79 decibels. But if I find, for example, an event that is 75, for example, then I can listen to that, but I don't issue a violation.
So if, so in theory then, or actually, let me rewind, how much real-time information, if you're sitting at your computer, you pull up the meters, how much lag is it between event and reporting as far as that goes? Is it an hour? Is it instantaneous? Is it 30-second delay? Like, how much delay time are we talking as far as this?
Okay. Yeah, good question. I didn't mention that. The trigger level for the meters is 65 decibels.
No, no, timeline.
And the duration of the recordings are 10 seconds.
Okay. So, in theory then, if a resident calls to complain and they're wanting to make sure that the operators within the scope and the letter of the law and where then the police wouldn't have to be dispatched, but then they can just start writing citations for noise complaints by just looking at the software, as far as that goes?
Could you rephrase that question?
So, the UDO says that if anyone is outside of the decibel level, say they're at 85, for example, that would constitute a fine, correct?
Correct. If it's related to any of the activities of the sports activity, concert, etc., yes. Because we have other, when I look at the data, there are other events, like for example, an airplane or traffic, that I, I mean, I look for these events, but that is not a violation because it's not related to the activities of the district.
Okay, so if then that's the case, how is, how are the monitors able to capture real data then if already that we're able to say, you know what, this isn't always going to be on this property, this event, these people? And that is a fair, that is a fair thing to say of like, okay, I can't just take this machine saying, hey, you guys are the problem. And that's fair because, you know, something could happen, you know, where car crash happens right outside the meter, that will obviously trigger an event. But if those meters, then everything is going to be kind of thrown into question as far as what are they capturing in that moment in time? How do we use that as a full comprehensive of saying, yes, they are fully compliant with the UDO or no, they're not? Does that make sense, as far as my question goes?
So, I have access to the actual recordings. So I can listen to the specific event. To all events that are over the 65 decibels. And then each recording as a level, that is called the equalized noise level, that that's what I use for the enforcement. So if that equalized level is over the 79 decibel, that hasn't been the case, then it's a violation.
Okay.
Did I answer your question?
I think, I just have to process it, but thank you.
Okay.
And in, one second, Alderman Barber. In all fairness to Mr. Martinez, if there are things that he has kind of inherited as far as problems or questions and if it takes him a little bit of time to get back with those answers to the council, that's fine, that's fair. Absolutely don't want to put him on, you know, inquisition status right now. Alderman Barber?
I agree wholeheartedly. I mean, we're not trying to put you on the spot. It's just that for years now, we've had residents coming to us asking us to do our due diligence on this. And this is our opportunity to look at that. And that's what I want to make sure gets done here. There's a lot of questions that we don't have answers to. And I'm thinking that we need to dig deeper. I know your, I know your time is terrible, but at this point in life. But I cannot, I don't understand all this. I mean, given some numbers and they're bogus to me. And I'd like to maybe get to some point where we could come in and see a demonstration of what this actually is, that works and how it does come together. So I'm saying, I'm not saying there's anything wrong here. I'm not saying that it's in any time that you've been of service to us because this pre-exists. So, at the same time, I do want to make sure that we do our due diligence for the sake of the residents that are here continuously asking us to do that.
Fair enough. Alderwoman Day?
Yeah, this is kind of just my last point. That it's the first time I'm hearing that a couple of these sensors are not the most reliable, at least from our perspective of what we need them to be doing. So I would like, at some point, to be able to talk to either whoever the new representative is at Ballpark Commons that's in charge of the sound complaints or the company that is, you know, that we're working with to do the technical fixes when you notice a problem. I would like to, because, you know, you don't know all the answers to the questions that we have. So it would be, at some point, I would just like to have one or both of those individuals here that we could ask some of these questions to.
That's reasonable. Alderman Hopefer?
I just wanted to comment regarding Alderman Barber's comment on doing some kind of a comp study. I think there's merit in that. I spent some time talking with the planner from the city of Economawalk and they actually break theirs down into four different types of duration of sound. Not to make it overly complicated, but you may have permitted it 79 for a very short duration and have a lower limit for something that's of a longer duration. And I think something like that may provide more relief to the immediate neighbors because if you had somebody that was doing something at 78 decibels for four hours, you know, that's a whole different ballpark. So I think that would make sense to do some kind of a study on it.
Is the Dotcom Stadium surrounded by residential homes? I know it's off the sea. I've not yet been there.
They, they, as I understand it, actually moved it like twice to get it further away from residential. But they, they sent me a copy of their study, which I just got, and I haven't had a chance to go through it yet.
I'm sorry, Alderman Eichmann, I didn't hear what you said. You're facing Alderman Holfer.
I apologize. I, um, asked the alderman if he knew I had not yet been to the Dotcom Stadium. I, was my understanding that it's not placed in this residential area, because the Melville Stadium is, and it right off the freeway and so forth. It's another thing to consider as well.
Okay. Uh, thank you. Be back.
Okay. I just, um, we'll go to the, to the next item that is the, an overview of the permitting process in this, uh, PDD for extraordinary events and temporary uses. So the temporary use permits, uh, for example, for the, for the baseball season, the, uh, movement and the foot and truck, uh, sorry, the rock and, uh, rock and foot, uh, truck rally at the Umbrella Ward, uh, city development staff review that in an annual basis. Uh, so, and then we should the, the permits, uh, temporary use permit for these events. And the extraordinary events and the special events permits, let's go through the, uh, city clerk's office. And this is the last slide, but this is just, uh, referring to, uh, what I commented, uh, before, that there is a UDO section that, uh, established that occasional outdoor activities exempted from the noise levels, uh, as shown in the table, uh, but, uh, there is a specific provision here that, uh, any events, uh, that use speakers should comply with the 79 decibels. Uh, the exception is the fireworks events that are normally over the 79 decibels, uh, level.
And Mr. Martinez, you mentioned the term PDD. Could you touch on the difference between the UDO restrictions, if you know, and the PDD restrictions? If not, I don't want to put you on the spot, but.
Sure. Uh, yeah, the PDD is, uh, the planned development district. We'll say, uh, another word to call this like custom signing is like, um, for inside, in example, in this example of the Ballpark Commons, it's like a district that was created specifically for this development. Uh, in the city, there are, uh, totals 40, uh, PDDs, planned development districts. This is number 37.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Was that all for that? Do you want to just morph in? Was there anything more on that?
I just wanted one, one more question for clarification.
Alderman Holfer?
Um, regarding occasional activities, so on the surface, I understand what occasional activities, you know, on occasion, not repetitively. But if we have an, an organization that runs multiple occasional activities for individual groups, but throughout an extended period of time, does it still fall under occasional? I mean, if the, if, using the Rock as an example, if they're having two outdoor gatherings a week for 16 weeks, does that still fall under occasional outdoor or is that regular?
Uh, for example, for the regular, uh, baseball season, it's listed here that it needs to comply with the 79 decibels. Let's say another event, uh, that, that would be, uh, determined in, in the, in the permitting process for the special event. Because it says here that provided, uh, the permit is issued for that event. So the permit, they establish, uh, specific condition of approval, uh, for that particular event, the noise level.
Including the sound?
So, well, in, in this case, any event that, uh, utilizes speakers needs to comply with the 79 decibels. Because it's, that is, uh, listed in the, in the PDD order.
Thank you.
Saturday night concerts type thing?
Yeah, concerts listed here.
Anyone else on this last item before we go on to enforcement part? C?
Uh, Mr. Craig? Was, uh, is there anything as far as direction of speakers written in as far as, um, if they're going to be focused inward towards the heart of, you know, the, the district? Or is it going to be something where it has to be mandated on, on directional as far as that goes? Or is it just, you got, you got the, your limit, shape them wherever you'd like to? Like, is there anything as far as that goes?
Um.
And if, and if you don't know, I don't want you to guess, but there's one thing that we, we're hearing concerns, we've heard the concerns from the, from the neighbors about that, and that's been going on for quite some time. So we're hoping to address all these things as we move forward. Or, you know, obviously to address neighbors' concerns. Alderman Barber? Are you, are you done, Mr. Craig?
Yes, sir.
Alderman Barber?
Have we ever had a professional audiologist come in and explain what these numbers do to people and if, and where they're being measured at so we have better understanding of what we're, we'd be approving? I mean, in terms of what is harmful at that distance and that level from the houses? Have we ever had anything that would relate to defining what's good or bad?
Not that I'm aware of. But I, I don't know if before my time, I don't.
I realize that, but I'm just saying that I don't even know what any of these numbers mean in terms of, of points where it's going to be measured and what that means to people. How far away are they from that point? And what the effect is of their children, their lives, their, you know? That's kind of like, I'd like to see a revamp of this thing, basically.
Thank you, Mr. Barber. Anyone else at this point before we move forward? Uh, do you want to keep on, uh, with C with enforcement?
No, I, I don't have any other items.
Oh, you, you put them all together?
Yep.
Well done. I was just, I, I kind of figured you were, but I thought maybe if I defined it, it would be different. So we also, so we cover item C, enforcement procedures regarding the UDO, Unified Development Ordinance, Section 15 dash 3.1107, under noise, that was discussed. Any further questions to that? Alderman Barber?
On the enforcement side of the, the, uh, community development group, who, who gets the information and acts on it and requests? There is something that said that a group gets a complaint and how it's acted on, is that laid out?
Sorry, uh, can you repeat that question?
What is the process for answering the complaint? So who looks at it? Who's, is it just you that's getting that or is it the community or the people that are working on this?
For noise complaints?
Yeah.
Submitted through the city? Yeah, that, that's, I, I, I reviewed it, the noise complaints.
Okay, but the, the, there is a group that, um, let's see. I'm, I'm just wondering what, what is, does that need to be looked at in terms of formalized process other than yourself that would attend a committee or something like we do with the, uh, Corey monitoring committee? And is it, what happens with a complaint and how does it get processed? Or does it, you know, that, that's what we'd like, I'd like to know that.
That is a question for policy direction. Yep.
Alderman Day?
There is, um, in one of the pages here, it's, it's, um, page 45 at the bottom, if you're following along in this packet, um, but it's in, uh, at the end of, uh, number two. Um, it, it says that the applicants shall provide a report to the plan commission after one year from the date of occupancy permit of the new stadium to review the results of the noise monitoring. Do we know if that was ever done?
Uh, I'm not aware.
Okay. Um, okay, thank you.
Any further comment on that? Alderman Barber?
Who are city development staff?
Good question.
Well, right now, we're, oh, go ahead. You're, you're basically looking at Regulow or Marion at this point. There's no director spot that's open at this point.
So when a complaint comes in, it comes into the clerk's office?
Okay.
The deputy clerk looks at all the complaints and then she forwards them on to which department handles each complaint. And then all the noise complaints for the Rock have gone to Regulow and then he does his regulatory process and, and acts on it and decides if it's a violation or not.
Alderman Holfer?
Is there, it, it sounds like there may not be great communication with the police department. So if people are calling the police for complaints, is that getting transferred down to you or is it strictly that it has to be online or we don't look at it?
The complaints that I review are the complaints submitted through the website.
Sorry, I didn't hear that.
Sorry. The complaints that I review are the complaints that are submitted through the city's website.
Okay, well, I would hope we would have some communication between the police department answering numerous complaints that it would somehow get filtered to you or the appropriate people within the department to take a look at. Or the police department should be informed to tell the complaining citizen that the best thing to do would be to go to the website and do an online complaint.
Alderman Eichmann? I'm sorry, Mr. Holfer, you?
Yes, I'm done.
Alderman Eichmann?
May, Nelson, may I confirm that there is not a citizen comment period during this meeting this evening?
Yes, uh, tomorrow will be a citizen comment.
Thank you.
You still have the, uh, you still have the floor, sir?
Yep, I, I don't have any other additional items.
So, so then we'll just move forward to D and I'll read D as on the agenda and then just, if there's any other questions on that. Overview and presentation by Department of City Development staff regarding temporary uses and extraordinary entertainment and specialty events regulations and permits. And I know you spoke on that, but if there's any other comments, Alderman Holfer?
Question. I know that licensing was working on some recommendations and revisions. Are they applicable to this item?
I believe they will be.
Do we have?
I don't know where they're at with licensing.
We don't have a timeline as to when that stuff would be coming forward?
I would, I would defer right now to Alderman Eichmann to see where they're at with, it's got quite a load. I know there's a, there's a special meeting tomorrow at four. Oh, there's another one tomorrow, don't you see?
Regular one.
Regular one's tomorrow at four?
Mm-hmm, special one's today.
Okay.
Well, my, my point being, if we're going to look at possible changes and things, I'd like that incorporated at the same time.
Well, I think we've got to do something, uh, to make sure that this is, is done in a fair and open and reasonable manner, so Alderman Eichmann?
I feel it's fair that down the road, there should be some discussion of perhaps an own separate entity committee that handles these types of complaints. The planning department is very, very busy. It's, you know, some of the, you know, similar to like Corey monitoring. You know, somebody who's, I mean, can give their time.
Just asking if you could put, go closer to the mics, it could be picked up and heard.
I was asking if down the road, we can think of the possibility of developing another committee such as the Corey monitoring committee, um, that would direct some of these issues and provide clear answers, reporting back to council and so forth. Planning has a lot on their plate to handle all of that at the same time, um, licensing as well. I mean, it, it may make sense down the road, something just to consider and discuss that just addresses some of these issues.
Mm-hmm.
Just as a thought.
Um, I agree. If I could just switch for a second and, uh, direct us to Alderman Barber. Uh, right now, the, how the Corey monitoring committee is, is doing, are they receiving, uh, complaints, updates and complaint status on anything from the Corey?
We have Standec, who we have a contract with you, Alderman. Well, there's two systems that are in place right now with monitoring Corey. Corey has a set of monitor, uh, seismographs and we have an outside contracted agency. We have an outside contracted agency that we, that the Corey pays for, but is independent. We, we establish the contract with this outside agency and we decide what it is we want them to monitor. And recently, the last couple of years, the, the better, higher emphasis is because the data's in place and it's not, like with rare exception, but the idea is how are the complaints being correlated with the data? And we get reports on that and we get the number of complaints that have come in on any given day. We know when the blasting is happening. We, we look at the complaints that come in and we say, okay, this, this is a direct correlation. We have to investigate that. There's days where we get complaints and there isn't. There's days where there's larger blasts and we don't get any complaints. But all that's being reviewed on a quarterly basis between the Corey data and our agency data.
Thank you. It's Alderman Eichmann's point, I think it makes perfect sense, it's that we should have a way to find out what they are, what the complaints are coming in, how they're being resolved. Uh, you know, are they legitimate complaints? Do they violate the PDD? I mean, where, where are we with all these things that come in and, and we have a response to them? And I believe that's a fair and open dialect with citizens that are putting the complaints in and if they're legit, we need to know where they're at and what type of communication goes back and forth. So, good point.
The way the committee was set up, uh, initially an hour, kind of a setup for the Corey monitoring. Each of the aldermen in the surrounding area, uh, which there's two primary aldermen for that Corey, make an appointment to that committee and the mayor makes an appointment to that committee, also one at large person. But that's how the committee gets formed to review and monitor the activity there. So just if we are thinking of a committee, that could be a format where the alderman would make the appointment, the mayor would make an appointment and then probably another alderman making it, who would be on that as well as oversight.
Cause as we go into, uh, the new planning manager starting, uh, Wednesday, uh, there's, there's a lot of things that are going to be on her plate and moving forward, I just want to make sure that we, you know, aren't overwhelming you with everything, but there's got to be a, a checks and balances to go Alderman Holfer, which I enjoy that term, checks and balances and a lot of things, and that's one of them. So. Alderman Barber?
Why do I feel like, uh, I don't want to control the meeting?
Monopolize. You said monopolize.
I don't want to monopolize it. That's the word I'm looking for. But my, my feeling is we're doing this, we're looking at it, we've got an excellent opportunity with the UDO to implement things so developers coming into the city know what to expect and what the rules are. And I just want to make sure that things are in place, that that would be something that is understood, how it gets processed, how it gets worked on, what the complaints are, and, and I don't want to, I don't want to miss the opportunity.
Agreed. Uh, anyone else on this item?
Very good point. Exceptional point. Anything else on this item?
Uh, with that being said, Mr. Martinez, anything closing on this?
Any directions?
How do you feel?
Well, I know that the committee of the whole is only for discussion, but.
Correct. So we're only for discussion until tomorrow night, but that's, uh, if there's anything that you, that you did not or were unable to answer, if you can take the time, I understand that to get these answers back, uh, citizens obviously came here because they're, you know, very concerned with the issues and we want to be able to provide answers. So, uh, if there's nothing else, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. First and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Six ayes, no noes. Motion carries.